And I think I'm good till, I think I'm going to, if I'm going to Scottsdale in August for a few day. Yeah, starting this new thing, this new job.
Oh, wait, when did you start?
Well, I'll start the first of the year, we're still, I'm still waiting. Like to call to order the December 13th meeting of the Shelby Township Planning Commission and ask the Secretary to call the role, please.
Mr. Snyder?
Here.
Mr. Meredith?
Here.
Ms. Gonzalez is absent. Mr. Grott?
Here.
Mr. Turner?
Here.
Mr. Oppone is absent. Mr. LaRae?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Great, thank you. Uh, next item is approve of the agenda. I'll make a couple of edits, one being that it is the the Macomb Township draft master plan that we'll be reviewing or considering or addressing. And that, as I understand, under the planning director's report, that the review of the zoning ordinance text amendment has been postponed until our next meeting in January. With those corrections, I'll entertain a motion. Moved by Meredith?
Support.
Support by Turner, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next item was approval of the minutes from November 22nd, 2021.
So move.
Support.
Moved by Turner, support by Moore, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Uh, two correspondents this evening to consider, the first being the Macomb Township draft master plan. I'll ask the planner.
Yep, thank you, Mr. Ruffett. Um, Macomb Township is reviewing their master plan. They've provided a draft master plan that can be accessed online. The link is attached in the memo, but you can go onto their website and retrieve it that way as well. Just one item of concern, sections one and two in Shelby Township are the last areas of the township that are being developed. Across on the east side of Macomb Township, they are proposing at 26 Mile and Hayes, an area, the immediate, the immediate corner there to be residential and sort of a flexed use like industrial as well. So with the board's direction, if we can just make a comment in that they eliminate industrial at 26 and Hayes to consider that. But other than that, I think the, the master plan abutting Shelby Township is pretty consistent with our side.
Okay. Now, would we be the appropriate body to communicate that, or should the Township Board, or both?
Um, since it's sent to the Planning Commission, we can just draft a letter on behalf of the Planning Commission and make a recommendation.
Okay, great. Uh, does anyone have any questions or comments? Um, if not, I'll entertain a motion to receive and file, but, but to direct the Planning Director to communicate our concern with the 26 Mile and Hayes designation.
So move.
Support. Moved and supported, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Uh, next item is the City of Rochester.
Okay, uh, the City of Rochester is also preparing their master plan and the draft is available online as well for our review. Uh, majority of the township Shelby side is pretty well-developed bordering Rochester, so I don't have any concerns with what they are proposing.
Great. Can we somehow direct them to get moving on that Dequinder and Avon intersection, because it's making my life miserable? All right. Irregardless, regardless of that, is there a motion to receive and file?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Moved and supported, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Uh, we've four items, uh, this evening. The first, a public hearing. Site plan number 21-03, special land use number one, Stephen Messina Jr. for Messina Trucking. I'll ask the Secretary to read the notice published.
Charter Township of Shelby, notice of public hearing. Notice is hereby given that the Planning Commission for the Charter Township of Shelby, Macomb County, Michigan, has received a request for approval of the following special land use. Applicant Stephen Messina, Messina Trucking, Inc., 6386 Auburn Road, Shelby Township, Michigan, 48317. Proposed use outdoor RV storage yard, location 45235 Merrill Road, east of Mound Road, south of Auburn Road. Site plan number 21-03 SLU-1 Sidwell number 23-07-33-351-031. Legal description is as follows. Planning Commission will meet on Monday, December 13th, 2021, at 7:00 PM in the Shelby Municipal Building, 52700 Van Dyke, Shelby Township, Michigan, 5867267243, for the purpose of holding a public hearing on the special land use application. The application for the special land use and the site plan may be examined at the Planning and Zoning Department in the municipal building Monday through Friday from 8:30 AM to 5:00 PM. Written comments may be submitted to the Planning Commission at the above address prior to the hearing. Oral comments will be heard during the public hearing. This notice is provided pursuant to the requirements of Michigan Public Act 110 of 2006, as amended. Shelby Township Planning Commission, Jerome Moffett, Chair, Raquel Moore, Secretary. This was published in the Shelby Utica News on November 24th, 2021. There were 35 property owners and two applicants were notified on November 18th, 2021.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Kirk, did the publication meet all legal requirements?
Yes, it did.
Great. Uh, and can you explain the uses under the present zoning and if the special land use request is appropriate?
This is our light manufacturing zone. It's a zone where the operations, external effects aren't supposed to reach other properties in the area. In this case, they're asking for more than just accessory outdoor storage for these vehicles. So for that reason, requiring a special land use, which is proper under the ordinance, so long as you approve it.
Great, thank you. Um, to the, to the Secretary, did we receive any correspondence on this request?
We did, Mr. Chair. We received correspondence from a Mr. Shute. He lives, um, next to this property and he's requesting the trucks move from the old lot to the proposed new lot due to pollution.
Okay, thank you. Um, the, the format for the public hearing will be as follows. The petitioner or representative will address this body stating what they're requesting, their reasons for it, then bring it back to the Commissioners, the Board, to ask any questions that they have of the petitioner. I'll then open it up to the public. So anyone is free to ask any questions or offer their, their opinion on what's being requested. Then we'll bring it back, allow the petitioner to answer anything that's raised before we render our, our recommendation on this request. At this point, I see the petitioner's representative, if you could state his name and address for the record. And then anyone that, that speaks this evening, again, I need the name and your address, and then you'll need to sign on, on the sheet next to the podium.
Good evening. Pete Snyder, Urban Land Consultants, 8800 23 Mile Road, Shelby Township, Michigan. Representing the petitioner, Messina, Stephen Messina or Messina Trucking. Um, I have a graphic here that hopefully they can get up on the, on the board. Actually, it's an aerial. It sort of gives a little bit of the setting for the, for where the site is. Did they hear me?
It's a nice sediment, but I think we need a little bit more detail than that.
I was gonna say Merry Christmas. Well, I'm looking at it on my screen here. Um, let's, let's see if I can run through it verbally.
There it is.
There we go. So i- if you can see that, again, this is sort of the, the area of the M53 Service Drive and Merrill Road and Auburn Road. You see two parcels there in purple, one sort of the upper or northwest. That's the Messina Headquarters Building, close fronting on Auburn, and then their service and maintenance building behind that. Uh, the other purple parcel across Merrill from that is where the Messina Trucking trucks are, are stored when they're not in use. There's a piece there outlined in red farther down Auburn to the, to the southeast. That's a parcel where they had outdoor storage of trucks approved in 2006. There's 2,000, there's, I think there's 27 spaces approved for that. And I think that, that may reference the Mr. Shute's letter that was approved for leasing spaces of storage of trucks and has been operating for a while. The piece of property we're talking about tonight is the one in yellow, its site. It, um, it's 5.3 acres. It's got 182 feet of frontage on Merrill Road. Of course, it's zoned LM, as was already stated. And it's proposed for lease vehicle outside storage, not specifically only RVs, although primarily RVs. Here's a, the site plan, again, these, these come up pretty small, so I'm not sure that they're easy for you to follow. I don't know if you can see it better on your screens there at the, at the board, but again, it's, uh, it's got frontage there on Merrill, 183 feet of it. There is an existing gravel area in the back that you can see. And, uh, they're planning on utilizing that, plus expanding it perhaps 25 or 30% to add some more spaces. They're asking for 55 spaces that would be 45 feet long by 12 feet wide, and then another 16, 30 foot long by 12 foot wide. The ingress egress is via Merrill Road. The, um, when we did the legal survey for this piece of property, the property line goes right through the existing maintenance building on the Messina Maintenance and Repair Building. I have no idea, we, we searched with the Planning Department how that situation arose, found absolutely no record of how it, how it occurs, but it, that's how it occurs. This site plan also shows a fix to that. What we're proposing to do is to take a piece, roughly a 50 to 45 to 50 foot wide piece of the, the corner there where the, where the parking is and the ingress egress is, and split that from this parcel and attach it to the Messina Headquarters parcel, and then grant a mutual ingress egress easement over the shared use items, meaning the driveway, the access off barrel, and the parking lot. So that, that will fix that. Again, when this came in for departmental reviews initially, it's already been through one round of departmental reviews. The, uh, the idea was that they, the Planning Department suggested just combining the two parcels and making one larger parcel, but for business and financial reasons, they're not going to be able to combine these two parcels. They need to stay separate and distinct. So we'll have to fix that a different way, but this way we'll fix it and, and maintain the required setbacks from that building as well. With that, I'm certainly available for any questions that may arise through the public hearing or from, from you.
Okay, thank, thank you. Um, I mean, this whole, this whole area's sort of been a challenge, and frankly, your client's parcel is, we've, had considered many different sort of issues with it, and, and I know the neighbors have, and I think, I'm sure there may be someone, some here that'll comment on this. I'm gonna start off and ask the Planning Director to offer her, her comments. You know, because the pictures that, that, that were, I mean, we mean, you know, again, from my perspective, I, I see where this is probably an appropriate use, but I think it needs to be done at a, at a, at probably, you know, the highest standards that, that we can try, just so we don't have to, let's do away with the issues that we've had to deal with before. But I wanna, I wanna start off with the Planning Director, because maybe she can frame up some of those.
Thank you, Chairman. Um, so first and foremost, I want to, uh, state that, um, Macomb County Road Commission requested that the landscape beds located within Merrill Road, 66 foot right of way be removed. That's first and foremost. And then, um, I just briefly want to touch on the improvements to the road. If the applicant is willing to make any improvements to Merrill Road there, I know that's quite an undertaking, but I think with, with every site, we'd like to recommend that. Second of all, like Mr. Snyder said, most of those comments have been addressed. Um, there's only a few items that are still remaining. Um, we know that there's gonna be RV storage, so is there gonna be a fence proposed around the property to secure the lot for the RV, um, storage portion of it? And, um, we understand that there's some sort of RV reconditioning and sales. There's been some code enforcement issues at this site. So just maybe if Mr. Snyder or the applicant can address that, that concern. So we certainly want to clean up the site and, and want to do what we can to work with the applicant in, in bringing the site to some sort of compliance, current compliance. Um, and we don't want to discourage them. We want to see this move forward the best we can. And, um, there's one item that the Township Engineer mentioned in her comments is environmental study been done on the site. So, uh, we'd like to see some sort of environmental studies done on this, this property as well.
Okay, thank you. Um, would your, would your client be open to, to paving the area that they're looking to, for, for the storage? To offer some sort of proper draining, you know, because we, they're all, I mean, just this site is such, well, you know, it's such a matter, there's, there are holes, there are drains, there, you know, I mean, just random holes dug in, it seems. I'm sure that somebody has a purpose for it, but, you know, having, having driven by it, I, I can't quite figure that out, but...
I guess, I guess the short answer is not, not by themselves.
Yeah.
I think, uh, I mean, it is what it is. It's an existing Macomb County Department of Roads road. Even just to get the engineering done, it'd be 30, 35, $40,000, just to engineer it before you even start building it. You gotta deal with MDOT because of the service drive. There's a lot of issues there. So I'm not saying that it, that, that they would not participate, but they're not gonna undertake it by themselves, no.
Okay. How about, all right, um, to the board, are there any questions or comments?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Turner.
Couple of questions. You said it's primarily RVs. What else is gonna be stored there? I've been out there and I know what's there.
Yeah.
I don't think you want to store tho- those kind of outdoor storage, but what kind of things will you store besides RVs?
What's shown on the plan is the RVs on the, I guess it'd be the northwest part, and then the cabs from, from semi-trailers down towards the south. Now, um, you'll probably hear from the resident tonight, Mr. Shute, who I believe is here, but he's asked that, that Mr. Messina, consider taking the RVs and put them over on what was approved for truck parking and take the, some of the truck, some or all of the truck parking and put it on this site instead. So that's why I want to be a little bit soft about exactly what's gonna go there. It may be that it's, that, that for purposes of the community, it might make more sense to rework this and, and put the semi-trucks over here and swap for RVs. In any case, it's outside storage of vehicles for lease. It's special land use, no matter what you, you know, no matter what exactly it is.
I don't own an RV and I've never stored an RV, but wouldn't you typically store an RV with license plates on it? Or no? Because a lot of, I was out there and I'll tell you, there's about 10 or 11 of them.
Yeah.
Maybe one or two have plates. The other ones look like people are living in them.
I, I don't believe, at least when I've been out there, I've not seen anybody living in them. There, there, there is a bit, the lessor of the property has a side business where he refurbishes RVs, meaning he buys old RVs, guts them and refurbishes them. And he was actually doing that work on the premises. So, and I already, I was already very clear with the applicant. On the, on the truck site just down the street, there's a very specific no truck maintenance allowed, da, 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 and to expect that a similar restriction on this property should outside storage be approved.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you.
Okay. The, the people living on site was, I had the same sort of impression when I drove by it.
Maybe it's, yeah, I, I don't know. I haven't been there in the last two or three weeks, but maybe I should.
Yeah, yeah.
There was no one present on the three times I've been out there, but the last time I was out there was about two and a half months ago.
All I'll say is, as I was leaving,
Mm-hmm.
somebody was coming there. So I don't know, I'm not saying they were living there, but
Okay.
the campers are all open and it looks like people could be living there.
Okay, yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you, Mr. Snyder. Anyone else?
You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Grott.
One of our initiatives for Shelby Township priorities, if you look at that board over there, is blight enforcement. There's a reason why we put that in. Uh, and not us, but actually the residents voted for. And Judy, can you, can you touch on that, please, for me?
Sure. So every year, we do a community visioning session towards the third quarter of the year, and we establish priorities in the township and, and what the Township Board would like to work on. So in-flight initiative was number one last year, and this year it is number three for 2022.
Right. Thank you. Uh, and, and that's exactly, that's exactly the reason because of stuff like this. This is, this is a blight at the highest level. Uh, you, you've got everything there, including gasoline cans, which is a fire hazard, stored next to one of the RVs or whatever. So I'm, I'm happy to hear that, that you're helping us to clean up the township and, and your client is willing to do that. Uh, we need to do that. If, if this doesn't happen, things will get very uncomfortable for that property owner, because we're not gonna let it down. We're not, we're not just gonna let it go. We're gonna enforce it. And, and, and this is why we got that initiative. Uh, we're just trying to make sure that, that, you know, everything is up to standard in a township, and we want to live in beautiful community. And, uh, we, we, we're making sure that we put proper safeguards to, to help us to get there. So I'm, I'm glad to hear that, uh, things are happening there, and, uh, I'm not sure where we're gonna go with this tonight, but I think at least that this is a step in the right direction. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Grott.
Thank you.
Uh, okay, this is, this is the only, thank you, Mr. Snyder. This is the only public hearing the Planning Commission will hold on this special land use request. All remarks will be entered into the record for Township Board evaluation. We are recommending body, and the Township Board will evaluate our recommendation, which is the legislative body. Uh, the Township Board will make the final decision on this request. At this point, anyone from the audience is welcome to ask any questions or, or offer their opinion on, on this proposal. Okay, you need to come up, come up to the mic? Sign that or? After you're done speaking. Put your name and address, sir.
My name's Pierre Cantu, and I'm, uh, I'm Anna and Steve's neighbor to the north, right to the north of Messina's Trucking.
What, what address is that?
6300 Auburn Road.
Thank you.
All right. So, uh, yeah, I, I came here in mind just to see if there's anything I needed to know or find out with regards to this, because it's, it's right behind my house. Um, and I didn't come here in, in mind, you know, to place any objections that the RVs have been there for a while. Haven't been having any, haven't been having any trouble with anyone, and I, I told Steve and Anna that before the meeting started. But I, you know, I, I didn't know that there was gonna be, uh, semi-trucks, so I guess I'd, you know, Anna did mention that to me. I was wanting to know how many semi-trucks, if it's gonna be semi-trucks too, how many?
Address the part, please.
What's that?
Address the, this part that we're...
Sure. How many semi-trucks we're talking? And the only, you know, I, I respect the fact they're trying to make the most use of their property and make money. I'd be trying to do the same thing. And they've been great neighbors, so I'd try to do the same, but, uh, I'd, I'd wanna know how many semi-trucks are gonna be, if there's gonna be semi-trucks going in and out of there, how many? Because, because, just because of the, the exhaust, the diesel exhaust, um, the, the whole area is actually turning into more of a semi-truck rental area, even down the road, and I, you know, I respect, respect that, but, uh, sometimes the fumes get a little bit nauseous. So if there's gonna be a lot of semi-trucks going out of there, I'd, you know, I'd have a little bit of a concern of how many.
Okay.
And I did, I did ask if there's gonna be any hours of, any lot rules as far as with the RVs. I, I did mention something to Anna and Steve that there's people back there, like 11:30, 12 o'clock at night this past summer, and I didn't get any trouble from anyone. I just didn't want to see it turn into a party place with trouble, you know, problems are spilling over on my property, but he, you know, he, he mentioned something about, I don't know, one particular person, I don't know, I don't know if they were having problems with him or whatever, but those are really my, the questions I have. If, I, I thought it was just gonna be an RV lot, but if it's gonna be an RV lot and semi-trucks, are we, is it just storage of semi-trucks? Is it gonna be semi-trucks going in and out a lot? How many, you know? Is there, is there gonna be an increase in the amount of fumes? I, just questions I have. I'm not, I'm not objecting to what they're trying to do, just to be clear about it.
Okay. Thank you.
Merry Christmas, everyone. I am Dennis Shute, 6530 Auburn Road, directly, my lot is pinched between Messina's property. Now, uh, mine can be simple. Hi, Dennis. I never met you. I'm on the other side of Messina.
I've seen you before.
Yeah, I'll come and talk to you sometime. Okay, now, um, last time myself and my neighbor Keith Brantley came to you folks pleading not to have the trucks parked at the M59 in Merrill Road, and we got what we thought would happen. We got carbon monoxide heavy when the temperatures are cool like this and they start these motors. And there's far more trucks there than were on the site plan laid out. I don't have to get into all the little techniques, but myself, I had surgery in June, and when I was in Beaumont here, I hope, you should all have a copy of it, that, uh, my carbon monoxide was real high, and, uh, and it, it had a flag on it. And I'm not a smoker, so they're saying that, you know, where's it coming from? Well, that's the only place it could come from is where I live. And, and I don't have any engines running or, or anything for, for me to, for me to get the carbon monoxide poisoning. So like this gentleman says, he's worried about fumes, because I'm sure he's familiar, depends on which way the wind blows and which way the temperatures are. As soon as you walk outside, they let the dog out in the morning or whatever, big go. You got it. You smell it. So it's, they, they come and go, it's nothing's fol- none of the site plans were followed ever. They come and go 24 hours a day. We're on a site plan that said between 10:00 at night and 6:00 AM in the morning, and that never happened. And then we were, we had dust, terrible dust last year. And, uh, uh, Mr. Messina and I have resolved a thing now, since June, that when there's dust, instead of getting Eagle or the State of Michigan involved, he and I will talk it over and figure out what we gotta do to keep the dust down. Now, uh, the only thing I didn't put in writing is like if they could pave Merrill Road, that's gonna be a lot more traffic. So, uh, any questions to me? I'm open.
Okay.
All set?
Yep.
Sign in, right?
Yep, thank you. Anyone else wish to comment? Go on once, twice. Okay, I'll bring it back to the board. The Planner, any final comments?
Uh, no, I don't have anything, Chairman.
Mr. Snyder? So, so the comment about dust and, and, um, what I made earlier wasn't just about addressing Merrill, but, but, but the lot broadly. I mean, about asphalting where he wants to park the trucks. And then, and then doing the, the appropriate draining for that, I think might help alleviate some of the blight that, that, that has existed on that site, especially given the, the new use.
Are you talking about this site or are you talking about the truck storage site? You're probably talking about both, really.
I'm talking about both, but I mean, what I can address now is the, to which, even in your own ambiguity, you know, I'm anticipating there may be, there may be a handful of trucks that get parked where these, these RVs are gonna be parked.
Yeah.
And so, okay, to his specifics, some, to specific, specific questions that were raised, how many semi-trucks are we talking additionally from?
It was approved for 27, and I've got the aerial there. I'm not sure you're gonna fit more. I, I don't know, but I've not ever seen over 27. I've never, I've never seen more trucks there than were permitted, but I don't live there.
Okay. I guess we're just, I mean, yeah, it's, like to address the whole thing, because it continues, the whole thing, the whole prop, the whole property became, is, continues to be an issue, but specifically on what you're proposing to, what you're proposing this evening, RVs and how many SUVs, or how, yeah, how many semi-trucks?
Well, if, if you're gonna add semis to this site, you're gonna have to take out some RVs. So we've got 55 RV spots. They're 45 feet long. A semi space needs to be at least 75 feet long. So you're basically, you're taking out two RVs in order for one truck to fit, essentially.
Yeah, but the impact, the impact, the impact between an RV and a, and a semi truck on a, on a neighborhood and a, and a site are different, so.
Understood. I'm just saying how many would fit, okay? If I just think about how many would fit, okay? The truck cabs, let's leave them at 16. The most semis that you would fit here would be roughly half the 55. Call it 25, 27, 28. I suppose there might be a layout where I could get 30, but...
We could restrict this to RVs. Can we restrict these just to RVs?
You can put reasonable conditions on the site.
All right. Just asking our counsel if, if, if we were to go ahead and approve, can we provide a reasonable restriction to be just RVs?
And that was the answer. Reasonable restrictions are allowed on special end uses, of course.
Yeah, so, okay. Uh, how, hours of operation for the RV access, and did we address that at all, or does our ordinance, did we?
The light man, yeah, the light manufacturing ordinance does not have an hours of operation, but we can add that in this.
I'm all about being reasonable. Um, what, what would, what?
From a practical sense, RVs are gonna be less of an issue, and they're not, RVs aren't pulling in and pulling out, doing long haul semis, I think. So if you were to, if you were to assign the same hours of operation for, for this site as was assigned for, for the trucking site, that would be more than ample. for the trucking site, that would be more than ample.
But did we sign for the trucking site?
I'd have to check.
Let me see if I can... I'll answer that question.
I don't think it was 10:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m., but...
Yeah, just a moment here. I've got the old site plan. It's probably on it.
Chairman Moffett?
Yes.
One question. Mr. Shute submitted some photos. I wanted to know where those... All this grading was going on.
Yeah, I was getting to that, too. Have you seen... Was that shared with the...
Not the applicant.
This site has not had any active grading on it. There is some work immediately to the south on...
Do I share some pictures with you?
Just... Yeah, just a minute. Let me see if I can get the hours of operation answer here. Yeah, the hours of operation on the old site plan, it says no running of vehicles shall occur between the hours of 10:00 p.m. and 6:00 a.m. Doesn't talk about arrivals and departures, but if you're running a truck. It's roughly the same. Can I see the picture?
Unless somebody's pushing it out of there. I mean, I know you're a fit young man, but...
Are you ready to show me a photograph?
Yeah.
I don't know where it is, but it's not our site. Consensus from... By the way, if you didn't know, Mr. Messina, that's Mr. Messina. That's the IELI site to the south of us. We think that that building in the background is probably Joe Dumars.
Okay. I guess those are the only questions. Does anyone have any more from the board level questions? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So move.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Our recommendation this evening must be based on the following standards. Compatibility with adjacent land uses, consistent with and promote the intent and purpose of this special land use. Compatibility with the natural environment, consistent with the capacities of public services and facilities affected by the proposed use. Protect the public health, safety, and welfare in the adequacy of public access to the site. Now, sort of for what it's worth, my two cents, I agree wholeheartedly with Mr. Groth that blight in approving, especially in areas of our township, should be a high priority. And there's absolutely addition by subtraction of a lot what's, you know, from this site. I'm just not sure where these pictures are and wanting to be sure where these pictures are. We have, you know, some questions on sort of site access and some other things and wanting to at least put the proper parameters about whatever we approve, to which we've just kind of spitballed a little bit here, maybe define that. So I guess I'd be comfortable postponing to see if we can hash some of these things out before we jump in with both feet. But again, I'm just one small little voice. At this point, I will ask the commission for a... Or advise that we can recommend approval. We could disapprove the request or we could table the request to evaluate the information or request additional information. In this point, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Turner?
I think it's clear we do need additional information, so I'm going to make a motion to postpone special land use application 21-03 SLU-1, Stephen Messina from Messina Trucking Incorporated, based on the applicant addressing all the department comments and the engineer's comments.
Support.
Moves by Turner, support by Moore. Are there any questions on the motion? Hearing none. Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner LaRae?
Yes.
Mr. Groth?
Yes.
Mr. Meredith?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
And the chair will just...
Thank you. Have a good night.
Next item is site plan number 21-42, David Esaw for a Class A non-conforming use request. While this is a public hearing, did we... I don't believe we need to read the notice, do we?
No, there is not a notice for this. It's just the agenda that the abutting neighbors received.
My eyes aren't the only one bad enough to not be able to see that, but I'm not going to help much. Okay, name and address?
My name is David Esaw. I'm an architect with Cornerstone Design, 210 Collingwood, Suite 106, Ann Arbor, Michigan, 48103. I'm here representing my client, Ronald Hiscock, who owns the house at 2061 Hamlin Road. And he is looking to expand his house so that we can make it accessible for him. Mr. Hiscock was in a motor vehicle accident, uses a prosthetic as a result of losing a leg. He gets around pretty well so far, but we're trying to plan for the strong likelihood that he will need to be in a wheelchair at least part of the time soon.
Great, thank you. Well, I'll be back in a quick second. I kind of jumped the gun a little bit. Forgot to ask the attorney if to explain the applicability of the Class A non-conforming use standards as they relate to the site.
What's being requested tonight is that the current use is non-conforming under the ordinance. When it was established, it was a conforming use. So as a non-conforming use, it can't be replaced, it can't be expanded. Our ordinance provides for a Class A designation, which would allow this use to be expanded or rebuilt in the event of some disaster. But it is a consideration to take whether or not you feel it is such a use that could be continued.
Great. So a financial institution or an insurance company may balk at engaging with a homeowner who doesn't have such a...
Absolutely.
Great. Sorry.
All right. I don't have much more to say. It's not a very exciting addition. It's mostly a bedroom and bathroom addition and a garage addition so that we can have a lift-equipped van and a roll-in shower for him and room to maneuver around a bed with a wheelchair. I do a lot of these projects generally for people who've had auto accidents, so the Michigan No Fault Insurance Company would pay for the majority of the work, if not all of it.
Great, thank you. The format for this public hearing was the same as the previous. I jumped the gun a little bit before I explained what the rules were, but the petitioner, representative, will explain what they're requesting, which they have. We'll now bring it to the board for their questions, then I'll open it up to the public to ask any questions or offer their comments, and then we'll address those after we've received them all. Thank you. Sit down for a second. To the board, is there any questions for the petitioner? Seeing none. This is the only public hearing. The planning commission will hold on the Class A non-conforming use request. All remarks will be entered into the record. At this point, is there anyone here that wishes to ask any questions or offer any comments on this request? Going once, going twice, bring it back to the board, to the planner, or Nick, did you do this one?
Yes, sir, thank you. So a quick history of the site. The house was constructed in 1950s. It received the light manufacturing zoning district designation in 1963, which made it a non-conforming use as a residential property within an industrial district. As Mr. Cook explained, the Class A designation will allow this property to be enlarged, added to, or rebuilt in the event of a fire. So with that, it's a pretty straightforward application to permit a residential district Class A non-conforming use or residential property Class A non-conforming use within the light manufacturing district. We only have two comments here for this site plan as it is. The first comment is that with a 400-square-foot addition or more, it will trigger the township ordinance to install a sidewalk on the site. So a sidewalk gradually installed in front of the site per the township ordinances. The second comment would be that with the current proposal, the setbacks are not compliant with residential districts. The five-foot sidewalk setback does not comply with residential districts, but if it does achieve the Class A non-conforming status, it can be developed under the light manufacturing districts, which would permit that five-foot setback. So if this is approved, then that second comment becomes void.
Any final questions from the board? Seeing none, entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I have a quick question. Looking at the picture here, are there cars being stored by the house? What's the situation? Looks like they don't have license plates or...
I can't speak to the license plates. There is a gravel area in front of the house along Hamlin Road that he has had some cars in. I don't see that many. I don't know what that's about.
Okay, well, I'm not going to... I'm going to vote proceed, but I think we, again, the blight situation is... We need to take a look at this because it just showed up on...
Yeah.
So you might want to discuss it.
Yeah, we certainly have to pass that on and obviously we have to put a sidewalk in.
Yeah, fortunately, the sidewalk's going to take care of that problem.
Well, but...
Those cars are parked right where the sidewalk is.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, good. Well, it will take care of it one way or another, I guess.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Turner?
For what it's worth, I was out there on Sunday and those cars are not there.
Oh, so then we will...
There was one parked there, but these here were not there.
Okay, well...
I guess it was three and a half years ago, so...
No, it's planned for 2020.
August. Which cars are we talking about? The top ones, August?
Yeah, yeah.
Unfortunately, the Google Street View vehicle only goes through our township on an irregular basis. So that picture is from 2018, but as Mr. Turner said, when I drove by there, too, there was only one vehicle in front of the building.
Yeah, as long as it's taken care of.
We've already cleaned it up.
Done.
He knew you were going to yell at him, so...
I'm not yelling, I'm just pointing it out, not yelling. I'm a very calm individual, as you know, so...
Did we have a motion to close the public hearing?
So move.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Our recommendation must be based on the following standards. Continuance thereof would not be contrary to the public health, safety, and welfare or the spirit of the intent of this ordinance. Use does not and is not likely to significantly depress the value of nearby property. The use was lawful at the time of its inception and no useful purpose would be served by strict application of the provisions or requirements of this ordinance with which the use does not conform. We may recommend approve or disapprove the request or table to evaluate it further. At this point, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Moore?
I move to approve the Class A non-conforming use application and proposed addition for David Esaw on behalf of the owner of 2061 Hamlin Road based on the following. Number one, the single-family home was lawful at the time of its inception. Number two, the Class A non-conforming status will allow the owner to make additions to the home that will improve their quality of life. Number three, the additions to the non-conforming structure will not exceed the setback limits established on the accompanying plot plan. And number four, the continued use of the existing family home will not negatively impact any abutting land uses.
Support. Motion by Moore, support by Snyder. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none. Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Meredith?
Yes.
Mr. Groth?
Yes.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Commissioner LaRae?
Yes.
Chair will just... Good luck. Our next item is site plan number 21-43 Suzanne Hemp for Cadillac Ashfall.
Just move a little slow. So we sent in the site plan map review. What we hope to do is to move some of the components of the existing plant, the scales, the drum, the baghouse, some rat bins, a screen to allow for better traffic flow through the facility. So we did have a site map, and on that site map we sent you, it showed the existing plant. And then there's bolded lines that shows where the plant's going to... Where the proposed plant would be moved. In addition to that, we'll be adding five new cold feed bins that you put the aggregate in that feeds the plant, a new control house building to replace the existing structure, and then the existing asphalt tank... Asphalt cement tanks that are there will be replaced with new asphalt cement tanks. And there's also a lab office building on that site plan. I didn't realize you guys had a projector. I would have brought my computer with me. I apologize. I was going to pull up my map so I could answer any kind of questions. So I guess we're just looking for a direction, what we need to do, submit an application or what are... What the process is.
Okay. I'll turn it over to the planner in just one second. I mean, part of... I mean, I think it's great that you're looking to upgrade and you're reinvesting in the township and, you know, it may not, what everyone thinks is the greatest use, but it's a necessary use for, you know... But an area that's really just going crazy. I mean, no one envisioned we'd get that kind of development in that part of the township. But it's just... It's unclear to me, just from what you've submitted, kind of what are you taking out? What are you putting in? Is it a one-for-one? You're just swapping out new equipment or...
Yeah, so the equipment that's there on site, the asphalt plant itself, I don't know if you want to explain a little bit. Would you like just a little more brief explanation about how the asphalt plant works?
Sure.
The components of the asphalt plant are going to stay the same. The only new equipment would be replacing the existing asphalt cement tanks, which are older and in need of being replaced, and then replacing a control center building on site because that's an older building and we'll be upgrading that building. But the rest of the equipment and adding some new cold feed bins. Dave, do you want to... You're better at this than I am.
Can I get your name and address?
Sue Hemp, I'm sorry.
And address?
Oh, 7755 Whiteford Road, Ottawa Lake, Michigan, 49267.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Now, you're going to have to do the same.
Dave Yackey, 4660 Merrill Road, Casco Township, Michigan. I work for Cadillac Ashfall. What we're doing is moving the asphalt plant essentially located in the property, get it off the boundaries a little bit, give us a little more room, better truck flow traffic. Cold feed bins are wore out, five of them, so we're replacing them, like she said. And tank farm needs to be replaced to keep up to our standards. Basically, we're going to pave the yard, landscaping, everything else once we move it. So it's going to be the old plant just moved over about 50 feet to the center of the yard.
Okay, thank you. To the planner.
Yes, thank you. So as the applicant stated, there's a few structures being added to the site, structures being relocated and a few being removed. I'll just give a summary again to make sure it's consistent with what I have. Five new cold feed bins are proposed, a new control house is proposed, and five new asphalt cement tanks are proposed. The existing structures on site that are going to be relocated are the scales with the associated silos, drums, the baghouse, the rat bins, and the screens. And then the existing lab building is going to remain as is with the addition of six parking spaces on the east side of the building. And then the control house building and asphalt cement tanks are going to be removed and replaced with new, correct?
Yes.
Okay, very good. So this property has existed as an asphalt cement plant since the 1980s. In 2011, they were given a Class A non-conforming use designation for the addition, alteration, or repair of this site, same as the last item we heard. With this designation, the planning commission at the time required that they seek planning commission approval if there's any other changes to the site in the future, which is why you see them before you for this pretty major change. They were given the Class A non-conforming use because of the large degree of outdoor storage on the site, which is typical of this type of operation. As far as the site planned, the proposed plot plan goes, I have a few clarification questions and a few overarching site questions or site comments. The first would be that we want to see elevations and specifications for the new structures being added on the sites. So we want to see dimensions, the heights, the widths, you know, renderings, everything that you can provide us for those. We want to see a little bit better differentiation between the existing locations and the proposed locations. locations. With the plan that was submitted to us, it's difficult to tell exactly what is being removed and what is retaining, remaining on site. Also, there's five new AC tanks proposed with the letter. It looks like there's six on the site plan proposed, to just clarify that difference there. And I also noticed there's a fiber bed, a blue smoke fiber bed identified in the plan. Is this going to be a new piece of equipment, or is this relocated on site?
Yeah, that's an emissions control that's actually being proposed. I don't, do we have an existing one there? I think this plant's, yeah. So, no, it's, it's an existing.
Alright, perfect.
I just couldn't remember if that was new or reusing the existing one.
Okay, and then we also see three hoppers in existing building on the plan northwest of the proposed control house. If these hoppers are going to remain, indicating on the plan, or indicate that they will be removed from the site. Also want to see an expected circulation pattern for vehicles traveling through the site, for trucks and vehicles existing in the lab. And from the building department, you also apply for a certificate of zoning compliance for this property, as with any business or entity operating within the township. There's also an outstanding drainage complaint at this location that'll need resolution. You can contact the building department, they'll help you resolve that with the township engineers. And then as far as any plans for sanitary or water being added to the site, none are proposed. Department of Public Works is okay with that. If you do have any plans to add on, let the Department of Public Works know, and we can make the necessary arrangements for that. Other than that, Department of Public Works has also indicated that no construction may begin prior to engineering approval from them and the township engineers.
Okay.
And that is the last of my comments.
Okay, seems a fairly extensive laundry list, but. To the board, any questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Turner.
To be honest, I look at the plan, I understand what you want to do. I think it's great what you're trying to do. I don't know what you're adding, what you're moving, what you're doing. For me, it's not clear, and I need to have some, a clear understanding of what I'm voting for before I move, do anything. So while I definitely don't oppose what you're doing, I just need more, more detail from myself as to what I'd be voting on before I move forward with it for myself. Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Grott.
My concern is, and then again, I, I know your location, I live in the neighborhood, so you do run a clean operation there. But again, I'm with Mr. Turner, there's a lot of stuff being added. Improve, new equipment added. My big question is, are, these are huge tanks, and that's where the ash was being cooked, right before it's transferred to moving trucks. Are there, are you planning to add any air scrubbers, for instance, to, to make sure that, that we maintain a good quality air in our neighborhood?
Okay, so the, the plant itself that actually makes the asphalt is equipped with a baghouse, and it's the baghouse emission control system. But in addition to that, we also have a blue smoke system, is what they call it. So basically, where the trucks get loaded on top of the silos, it sucks air to, you know, try to eliminate some of the odors from the asphalt that is getting loaded into the trucks.
Okay.
So those controls are not changing. They're in place now, and they will continue to be in place.
But that's your transfer operation, what about your cooking operation?
That's, that's the baghouse.
I see.
So it's, it's, so the tanks themselves just heat the material so that it's, can be moved, or, you know, liquid can be pumped to the plant.
Okay.
It doesn't cook the asphalt, if that makes sense. So if you don't heat the asphalt, basically it cools and it hardens. So when the tanks aren't heated, you wouldn't be able to move the product. So basically, those tanks are just heated, and they also are controlled, or have vapor recovery systems on the top of those tanks. But the asphalt's not being superheated in the tanks, it's just being heated so that you can move it into the asphalt plant inside the drum, and it can make the asphalt.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
It does, yes.
Okay, just want to make sure, sometimes I stumble around, I'm not sure I'm clear.
Thank you for explaining that. So, again, I'm, I'm not against your improvements. I, I think, I actually, I welcome it, because it's, you got to be up to date and on top of those things, but I'd like to get a little bit more clarity on, on some of the items, and, and then we'll, we'll go from there.
Okay, yeah, we'll work with Livingston and have them make some adjustments to the plan and hopefully clarify some things.
Absolutely, yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. There are no other questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Turner.
I move to postpone site plan number 21-43, Susan Henth for Cadillac Ashfall, 51800 Nappy Drive, located north of 23 mile road east of M53. Industrial site modification in order to provide greater detail on the equipment and structures to be relocated and, and added to the site.
Support.
Moved by Turner, support by LaRae. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none, Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Commissioner LaRae?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Grott?
Yes.
Mr. Meredith?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Chair will choose. Next item is under Old Business Site Plan number 18-44, John Gerhart for Spring Design Manufacturing. Someone else trying to stay awake behind you. What's that?
My name is Terry Meisel, architect. I live at 42017 Farm Lane Court in Sterling Heights.
Can I get you to stand a little bit closer to the mic or bring it towards you?
Okay.
Repeat it? Go ahead.
Terry Meisel, architect. I live at 42017 Farm Lane Court, Sterling Heights, 48313.
Okay, so what are you, what are you requesting of this body?
In October of 2019, work better if I put my cheaters on. October 22nd, 2018, for about a period of two years, the site plan was approved. At that time, the economy was taking the dump, and COVID came in and restricted the amount of manufacturing that could be done. So the machine that he was planning on buying, we didn't need. We're still not up to full speed as we were prior to the COVID. And what we're asking for is for the approval of the site plan to be extended for another two years.
Okay. As I understand it, to build the office component first, and then the, the additional?
Right. Just a little corner office.
Okay.
Space we need.
So to phase in those, those two?
Yeah.
Okay, very good. To the planner for her comments?
Thank you, Mr. Moffett. As Mr. Meisel said, they are proposing the office portion of the, this building. I only had two comments. One is continue the sidewalk along the south side and the west side of the office. And then also, with, with the addition of the, the office, it's going to trigger one more parking space. So I think there's enough area on the site where, where we can accommodate that. So I don't have a problem with that. I don't see any issues with extending this for another two years.
Okay, thank you. To the board, any questions for the petitioner? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Moore.
I move to approve the modification and extension for site plan number 18-44 for John Gerhart, Gerhart Enterprises LLC, Spring Design Manufacturing, subject to submitting a revised plan addressing the two department comments.
Support.
Moved by Moore, support by Snyder. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none, Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Commissioner Meredith?
Yes.
Mr. Grott?
Yes.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Commissioner LaRae?
Yes.
Chair will choose. Good luck.
Thank you.
Let's get, let's get it built this time.
Yeah.
We hope to beat the weather.